Good afternoon, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board for Thursday, October 21st, 2021. I'd like to read a notice, "The public will be allowed to attend at a reduced rate of 50% capacity of the Professional Development Center meeting room space. Once that capacity has been reached, admission into the meeting space will be closed. All audience members will be required to wear a mask at all times. Masks will be available upon request." The Committee of the Whole Meeting, scheduled for October 21st. It's the full, yeah, 2021 at 5:00 PM will be streamed live via YouTube. The reason I'm struggling with that, it says the Committee of the Whole, this is a regular meeting, right?
Yes.
So, I'm gonna reread that, okay? "The regular school board meeting, scheduled for October 21st, 2021 at 5:00 PM, will be streamed live via YouTube. A link to watch the meeting can be found at Board Docs located on the school board's website. A period for written public comment will be provided before the meeting as well as before each action item by the board on an action item. Individuals wishing to make public comment about any of the posted action items will need to click on the Agenda Item in Board Docs and submit via the highlighted Public Comment hyperlink on the Agenda Item Details. Online comments are available for public review." We now like to call the meeting to order. We would, the invocation will be led by School Board Member Evelyn Ware Jackson, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance for our young cadet who will be introduced to, introduced by Lieutenant Colonel Shirley Sutton. Hey Shirley, good to see you again. And so would you all please rise?
Thank you, thank you, Lord. Father, we thank you for your mercy and grace. We thank you for your favor over the East Baton Rouge Parish school system. We ask for your protection and blessings around our students' hearts, minds, and bodies through these times, and for our teachers, administrators, and board members. We bind up sickness, disease, and mental anguish from us all. We bind up the spirits of fear, greed, and deception from every good work in the district. Father, make every crooked path straight according to your word. We thank you in advance for clarity on every item, for divine wisdom, understanding, and discernment. We thank you, Lord, for truth and unity in the body of the board and in every, in every meeting, and we make, as we make decisions, in the best interest of the school district. Then we ask that you cover us all in safe travels home, in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Good evening, Board President Mr. Tatman, School Board Members, Dr. Narcisse, citizen and friends of East Baton Rouge Parish School District. I would like to thank you for allowing our cadet the honor of leading the Pledge of Allegiance today. I'm Lieutenant Colonel Retired Shirley Sutton, Senior Army Instructor at Northeast High School, where I have the pleasure of serving under the leadership of Head Viking, Ms. Shawna Ross. I would also like to acknowledge the East Baton Rouge Parish Director of Army Instruction, Lieutenant Colonel Retired Robert Hiver. It is my distinct pleasure to introduce one of our program's top third-year cadet. He is the son of Mr. James Tierney and Ms. Rachel Aver of Pride, Louisiana. In GROTC, he serves as the S6 Signal Battalion Communications Officer in Charge and member of the Honor Guard and a Cadet Challenge Fitness Team. His goal is to maintain his academic focus during his remaining years of high school. His favorite leadership principle is know yourself and seek self-improvement. Many describe him as an open notebook, constantly assessing his strengths and weaknesses while challenging himself to improve. This diligent and well-mannered cadet plans to major in business in hopes of owning his own company. Ladies and gentlemen, it is with great pride and respect that I introduce Cadet Master Sergeant Bryce Aver.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a rhetoric for which it stands, one nation, under God, liberty and justice for all.
Mike, will you do the medal?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
I have it.
Oh, somebody else, okay, great.
Bryce, congratulations.
We thank you for your service, and on behalf of the superintendent and the board, we want to give you this medal. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Cadet Aver, for being here tonight, and Lieutenant Colonel Sutton, we miss you, so it's good to see you again, too. Thank you for being here. We move now to Item 2, a roll call. Madam Secretary?
District 9, President Tatman.
Present.
District 4, Vice President Collins.
Present.
District 1, Mr. Blue.
Here.
District 2, Mr. Lannis. District 3, Mr. Howard. District 5, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Present.
District 6, Ms. Dyson.
Present.
District 7, Mr. Goday.
Present.
District 8, Ms. Bernard.
Present.
Thank you, we have a quorum. We now move to C1, Meeting Minutes, Approval of the School Board Minutes of September 16th, 2021, Regular Board Meeting and the October 7th, 2021 Committee of the Whole. Do I have a motion moved by Mr. Goday and seconded by Ms. Bernard? See no questions or comments on the minutes from the board. We go to the audience on the meeting minutes. Any comments from the audience on the meeting minutes? Seeing no movement, we go, we go back, we come back to the board, and maybe having technical difficulties, but we come back to the board, seeing no questions. Madam Secretary, please conduct the vote.
Can we do a roll call vote?
Wait, wait.
We need a roll call. District 1, Mr. Blue.
Yes.
District 2, Mr. Lannis.
District 4, Vice President Collins.
Pre, uh, yes.
District 5, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Yes.
District 6, Ms. Dyson.
Yes.
Yes.
District 7, Mr. Goday.
Yes.
District 8, Ms. Bernard.
Yes.
District 9, President Tatman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Minutes are approved. We move now to D1, Resolutions, Consideration of Request to Adopt a Resolution Proclaiming October 2021 as Red Ribbon Month and October 23rd through the 31st, 2021 as Red Ribbon Week. You want to read the resolution, Ms. Collins?
Proclamation, whereas we are committed to education and the nurturing of a full potential for all, and whereas the East Baton Rouge Parish School System believes in and strives for healthy, safe, and drug-free, uh, drug-free school environments, and whereas the citizens of East Baton Rouge Parish are encouraged to join the rest of our nation as we remember and honor national and local heroes who have lost their lives in the fight against substance abuse, and whereas, as citizens of East Baton Rouge Parish, we join with teachers, parents, administrators, and parish officials in encouraging all children to become productive individuals and to maintain healthy lifestyles. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board does hereby, hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 as I-Care Red Ribbon Month. In conjunction with National Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through 31st, 2021, therefore be it further resolved that the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board encourages all schools to plan and develop activities to promote healthy, safe, and drug-free lifestyles. So moved.
Moved by Ms. Collins, seconded by Ms. Dyson. I s, huh? Oh, okay. You want to do it? Ms. Bernard? We have a quorum still, yeah, okay. Okay, great, well, welcome.
President Tatman, Vice President Collins, the board, and Dr. Narcisse, thank you so much for your continued support for the I-Care program. East Baton Rouge Parish School System and the East Baton Rouge Parish Community have supported I-Care for 40 years in prevention and education. Drug-free looks like me is this year's campaign slogan. We are celebrating all month, but our schools are taking next week as Red Ribbon Week. They'll be participating in activities, bringing awareness to substance use prevention, and as a drug, alcohol, and violence prevention program, we strive to promote healthy decision-making, build resiliency, self-esteem, and teach coping skills. Our specialists, which some came tonight to help support, they are dedicated to the schools and the community, and they provide individual and group sessions to our young people. They do a lot of programming on our campuses, and we continue to provide workshops and trainings to the EBR community. We truly hope that we will be able to serve another 40 years, so thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and the work you do. You want to introduce your team, or?
Sure. Okay, so, let's see, I have Alicia Selders and her son, Bryce. Bryce, I was just making sure.
Okay.
Bryce. We have Tanya Chapman Griffin. I have Calvin McClinton, Jennifer DeGries, Pamela Howard, Cecile Washington, and Maureen Lawrence. So, thank you so much. They're an awesome team, I can't tell you enough. I think the community can tell you a lot, but we, I really have a great team, so thank you so much.
You do, and thank you so much for all the work that you all do. It's such important work, we so appreciate it very much. Thank you, and thank you for being here. It's just a great opportunity to recognize you all for the great work you do in our district, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience on the resolution? Seeing none, back to the board. Seeing no questions or comments from the board. Madam Secretary, we calling the roll, or we?
I think so. We doing a roll call? Roll call.
Yep, roll call vote.
District 1, Mr. Blue.
Yes.
District 2, Mr., uh, District 4, Vice President Collins.
Yay.
District 5, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Yes.
District 6, Ms. Dyson.
Yes.
District 7, Mr. Goday.
Yes.
District 8, Ms. Bernard.
Yes.
District 9, Mr. Tat, President Tatman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution is approved. Thank you all so much for being here.
Thank you.
Before we move on, can we get somebody to help make sure everybody's logged in? We may need some technical assistance. Anybody just wave and, well, now I have a vote. You want me to vote?
No.
No, it's okay. All right. We move now to Item Number 2, Partners in Education, recognition of the volunteers in public schools partners in education for the month of October. Main Event, Ms. Simmons.
Good evening, Superintendent Narcisse, President Tatman, Vice President Collins, and all members of the board. We are thrilled to be here today again to recognize one of our amazing community partners, busting at the seams a little bit here, trying to maintain my composure because I'm really vibrating off of their level of enthusiasm with partnering with VIPS. This is, has been a wonderful partnership thus far. It actually began at the very beginning of Main Event opening, and then of course some time for them to get settled. They were so committed to volunteering and partnering with VIPS that the conversation about partnering began again this school year, and they just dove right in. They started with First Day Helpers, which is an annual initiative that we do at the beginning of every school year where we send our volunteers and partners out to various schools all over East Baton Rouge Parish to welcome the students back and help with carpool and escorting students to class, and they were right there on board. This is Haley and Ashley. Haley is the Sales and Events Manager, and Ashley is the General Manager, so we have direct participation with upper-level management from Main Event. They are directly involved, which is so wonderful to see. They've also, not only with First Day Helpers, they initiated calling us to help with Hurricane Ida relief. They actually wanted to provide food and meals for the Jefferson Terrace School students and their families, so they distributed close to 70 food boxes at the school for the families and the students at Jefferson Terrace, which was amazing. They are also partnering with us to provide space if we need any event space, which is wonderful, for our volunteers or our administrators, and they have some amazing programs with them, which they'll tell you more about. They have an accredited STEM program at Main Event where there are workshops, and students can learn about how the workings and mechanics of the actual games and activities at Main Event works, which is exciting. I can't wait to bring my daughter, we were talking about that earlier. And we also have a leadership program at Glen Oaks High, which they have agreed to incentivize for the participating 20 students. So we'll have a nice celebration at the end of that leadership program by the end of the school year for those students that have been chosen to be in our leadership program. Haley and Ashley?
Thank you. Thank you for the introduction of, okay, yeah, I guess, I guess I can do that. First and foremost, we're extremely honored to be here. You know, we know that coming into a community that being a business partner isn't just about, you know, providing jobs and a place for your family to relax and come in. So being a part of a community is what we're really passionate about. You know, providing those things that we can do for, for anybody here to win those hearts and minds of our future leaders in our, our community is really what we're about. We definitely have started a program, which I'm gonna let Haley kind of talk, talk a little bit more about, the STEM program, so we're really looking forward to having some young individuals there where we can teach that educational aspect of it as well as having fun and get them motivated, because that's what it's really all about.
Yeah, so, I'm Haley, I'll go ahead and second that, that thank you. You know, we're so grateful for the East Baton Rouge Parish School System and also for volunteers in public schools, for the reach that they give us to be able to connect with students, with their parents, and with other community partners that are supporting these schools. Just one of the initiatives that we are rolling out right now is called Play Academy. We've devoted a lot of, a lot of time, a lot of our hearts into this program, where we're not just offering fun to students, but we also have the opportunity to offer them something educational. So this is a series of labs that schools can use, and they can, or volunteers in public schools groups can use, and they can come to Main Event, go through a series of labs, whether it's bowling and learning about the trajectory of the ball and how it changes, you know, the number of pins that they knock down, or whether they're pulling their friends for their, their favorite pizza flavors and learning how to make charts and graphs. We've truly come up with this way to be able to make education fun and offer something that we believed was much needed when it comes to, when it comes to field trips. I am very proud to say that we are the only family entertainment center in the world that is accredited by stem.org for these programs, and we're so excited to share them with you, and so grateful for volunteers in public schools for giving us the opportunity to be able to have the reach that we need to get these programs out to students.
Fantastic, great. What is the, what's the top pizza type?
What's that?
You said you, you're doing charts and graphs on pizza, which one is the best? Which one wins?
Always pepperoni. It's always the pepperoni.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Goday, go ahead.
On behalf of the board and the superintendent, we want to give you these in recognition for all of your hard work.
Thank you.
Obviously, a good school system is part of any great community, but the community is part of any great school system, so thank you for all the work that you're doing.
Thank you so much.
And thank you for all the help that you're giving us. Appreciate it.
Thank you, we're honored to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. We move now to Item E1, Monthly Financial Report, for information only. And Personnel Changes, E2. We now move to Item F1, Update from the Superintendent, Dr. Narcisse.
Thank you, President, thank you, President Tatman. So, earlier this week, our 2021 Louisiana State Teacher of the Year, Ms. Natalie Roy Mitchell, traveled to Washington DC to meet with the President of the United States, Joe Biden, and the First Lady, Jill Biden. Ms. Roy is a middle school teacher at Glasgow Middle School and the 2021 Louisiana State Teacher of the Year. We're extremely proud of Ms. Roy, and we thank her for representing EBR schools in the state of Louisiana so well through her tenure as the State Teacher of the Year. And although she's not here, I still want to give her a hand for her work. It is always great when one of our own is doing great work. We're excited to announce that the winner of the National Hispanic Heritage Month Coloring Contest, Contest is first grader Mica George. Mica is a first grader at Baton Rouge Flame studying Spanish. We want to congratulate you to Mica and to all the students who participated in this special coloring contest. We are so excited about all the good things that happened during Hispanic, Hispanic Heritage Month with our young people, and we always want to continue to celebrate. Let's give Mica a hand for her efforts. The United Way and the Foundation for East Baton Rouge Parish Schools Annual Giving Campaign is officially underway. I'd like to invite Kathleen Sarsfield, Executive Director of the Foundation, to share a little more with us. Kathleen?
Thank you. Thank you, President Tatman, Vice President Collins, members of the board, and Dr. Narcisse. I'm so glad to be here. I'm just gonna take two minutes of your time to talk about a, a funding campaign that we would like to ask you to support. I'd like to ask for support from the board as well as all district employees as we enter this season of giving. This week, we kick off the Combined Annual Support Campaign of 2021 that features two nonprofit community organizations, both the Foundation and Capital Area United Way. I worked at United Way for six years, so I feel okay representing both organizations today and asking for your help. The district not only serves as the system responsible for providing public education to local school students, but it serves, as you know, as the second-largest employer in our area. All 5,700 employees should receive a pledge card this week that offers each person the opportunity to support the Foundation and United Way. Capital Area United Way has been in this community for over 100 years, which is amazing, and has been running a campaign with EBR for at least 60 of those years, and currently supports education as one of their four main pillars and focus, focus areas. The Foundation is also an independent 501(c)(3) nonprofit that's a little bit younger. We've only been here about nine years. This is our third year in the annual support campaign for the district, and we were formed to provide dedicated support to the school system by building partnerships and funding high-impact projects for which tax, dollars, and other governmental funding isn't available. While many people have heard of United Way, the Foundation is still getting the word out about our new direction, and as this year progresses, you'll hear more about us as we go along. This year's campaign runs from this week through November 19th, and provides options for both one-time gifts and payroll deductions, so there are two ways that, that you and employees can give. There are two levels of incentives this year to donate. One is for individual gifts, and one is for schools and facilities, so there's a little bit of a competition there. Individuals who pledge or donate a total of $60 will be entered into a drawing for a prize, which this year is an Apple Watch, so look for that coming. There's also a chance for a school or facility to claim the annual giving award for 2021. And the last year winner was the DuFROC School, and I spoke with Principal St. Julian, and she asked that, I recognize Ms. Gordon for their back-to-back victories. They've won both years that this support opportunity has, has been offered, and she also asked me to challenge any other facility to try to take it away from her, because she said it's gonna stay at the DuFROC School. So I just ask that you and all the employees of the East Baton Rouge Parish School System consider pledging your support in this coming month, and I thank you in advance for your consideration. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Kathleen. We're excited to share our EBR School Scorecard. We just launched it, and we wanted to make sure that we can go ahead and allow our families and communities to be able to see this score, scorecard. The scorecard would allow us to easily show and share with the community where we are in our progress towards our strategic plan. At this point in time, I'd like to invite our Chief Technology Officer, Amy Jones, and Chief of Accountability and Assessment, Andrew Okoski, to join us to share this new tool.
Thank you, Dr. Narcisse, and good evening, everyone, both here and at home. Ms. Jones and I are not only honored to represent our respective departments in sharing this new and exciting adventure with you, but also in representing our colleagues behind us. What you're about ready to see tonight, and what we're gonna continue to enroll or out for you in the future, represents the hard work and hours of many. So here, here we go. For those who have not had an opportunity to check out our strategic plan, please do so. It includes 25 key performance indicators. And key performance indicators are those metrics that are most important to us, that's gonna monitor our plan implementation and tell us how we're doing along the way. Due to the nature of these KPIs, some lend themselves to monthly reporting, others quarterly, some twice a year, some annually at the completion of the year. So what our teams have been doing is building a data calendar, which we will roll out to you next month, that will show when you can expect updates for each of the 25 KPIs. What we want to do today, or tonight, is share with you those of that have already gone live on our district website and on our scorecard. We're prototyping and piloting five, one or two, or actually five or six, two in the student achievement, and one in each of the other cornerstones. But before we jump into the data metrics, Ms. Jones is gonna take you on a tour of our online scorecard.
Thanks, Ms. Okonski. So if we go, if you go to our ebrschools.org homepage, you'll see there's a banner across the homepage that says View the Scorecard, and a, and a click link here. It'll bring you to this Year 1 at a glance, and we've, we've, we've shared this with various stakeholder groups, with our principal advisory committees, our student advisory committees, our families, and our stakeholder, community stakeholders, and they've given us some really rich feedback, one of which, since we were with you last, a couple of weeks ago with the Committee of the Whole, that we have incorporated into the scorecard. And so as we roll over, you'll see that we can now see the details, dot, dot, dot notes at each KPI, that there is data underneath there that tells when that data was pulled. If you go down to the three-bar detail list, it will break it down and disaggregate it by schools. So we've got five data points to share with you this evening, and you'll, if you'll note at the bottom of that scorecard, there's a feedback link that you can give us some feedback yourself on how we're doing on this tool as a measurement device, and some things that if you think we need to improve on, or tell us how we're doing, then you can hit the feedback button, and it will open up to a survey that you can provide for us. So now we'll go into each of those KPIs.
Thank you, ma'am, and, and one point to note is that our scorecard was And one point to note is that our scorecard was developed in-house by Ms. Jones's team. And so, that as we supply the data sets each month, they will become populated. Those that will refresh monthly will be populated around the first of the month, each month. And then, as she mentioned, folks will be able to check to see that as of date, to make sure that the data is refreshing. But we want to talk to you tonight and introduce to you all the five data points that are currently live, and then preview some that are coming ahead. It's important to note that with the fidelity of our strategic plan, we've been intentional. This is twofold. The first piece is that we want to share data in a transparent manner. But the second piece is, we want to engage in meaningful conversations about the data, and we want to make sure as we share it, we break it down into community-friendly terminology so that it can spark the conversation as we continue on our journey of continuous improvement with our strategic plan. The first two data points that we're going to share with you tonight live under student achievement. Their objective 1.1 and objective 1.6. We're going to start with objective 1.1, which is centers around pre-K enrollment. We want our viewing public to understand that this is quantified, daily, in-house in our student information system. It is certified for us twice a year by the Louisiana Department of Education, so those state official reports live on the Department of Education's website. This is a number that we can pull any and every day, but we're going to pull it monthly and post it publicly, or refresh it publicly. And we also, as part of this conversation, or to start off the conversation, want to show a multi-year history to the public. And so, on the slide in front of you, you see where we've averaged with pre-K enrollment over the last five years, and you can see how we have determined baselines and goals for moving forward. I must note to you that this includes students in ages three and four who are in pre-K programs noted by the Louisiana Department of Education. So, right now, or actually, on October the 1st, this was the live number. If I ran it today, it would be changed. We know that it's growing daily, and so, we look forward to continuing to share this number with you every month so that you too can monitor the trends with us. We're going to move to the second KPI under student achievement, which focuses on in-and-out-of-school suspensions. This is an important piece for our students and for our schools. And again, we want folks to understand how we're measuring and calculating this. This is the percent of students who have been suspended. This includes both in- and out-of-school suspensions. If a student was suspended more than once, the student is only counted once. So, if we go into our five-year history, you'll notice that over the last five years, we have ranged up anywhere in the neighborhood of 34% to 35%. This data was run on October the 1st, which was the eighth week of school, and it was averaging around 3% on October the 1st. This is one that will change daily. It will change monthly. It will be refreshed the last week or the first day of each month moving forward. If we go to cornerstone number two, which is customer service. The first KPI that we're featuring or spotlighting this month focuses on total student enrollment. October, as you all know, is a month where the state certifies our enrollment. And so, as we move towards that deadline with the state, we ran our data internally on the first of the month to show a snapshot of where we stood. For folks at home or community members, this is housed on the Louisiana Department of Education website, and is the sum total of students within our LEA. It does include pre-K accounts, and includes Type 1 charter students in this count. If you look at our historical data, you'll see that we are currently trending up. This does change daily. It is a very fluid number as students come in and out of our system. We know that some of them have to be checked and certified by the state, and so, we have not received that official certified count yet from the state. Once we do, we will update that number. But until then, at the first of each month, we will continue to put our internal numbers on the OS online scorecard. Moving to cornerstone three, which is operational excellence. Under operational excellence, we are starting with the number of students who missed 10 or more days. Dealing with the learning loss of COVID has been significant academically for our system, and we know that many students missed many days of school over the last two years. This is a metric that we started in the first two to three months of school, actually running daily internally. From the third week of school to October 1, every member of the senior leadership team got a daily enrollment report that had a column for students who've missed five days and 10 days of school. This is an important metric for us as we move forward. And so, these are taken from internal attendance reports. As a teacher or a school marks their attendance each day, it goes into our student information system. We run it in real time. If a student was present for just one class, one course, or one moment in time that day, they were marked attended for the sake of this report. So, if we look historically, you can see that in 2019, we were as high as 36, over 36% of students missing 10 or more days. Notice the last two years, you can see a COVID effect, but it was still high. Currently, on October 1 data, the last time this report was officially run, we were at 8%. Once again, that marked the eighth week of school. This is another number that will be fluid, but we're committing to sharing on a monthly basis. Moving to our last cornerstone, employee development. Objective 4.1 is where we're starting with our scorecard on this one, and this is the retention of high-performing teachers within the system. As many of you know, Louisiana classroom teachers receive a composite evaluation rating each year. It's based on a four-point scale. We pulled out those teachers who scored either a 3 or a 4, and we looked at what percentage returned to our district for the next year. We did pull out retirees, so retirees did not affect this number. We did not, we did not discriminate against folks who had gotten a promotion. It's whether or not you were a 3 or 4, and you returned as an employee in the district, because it's important for us to keep our best and brightest educational and academic staff in front of our students and supporting daily instruction. This information actually goes to the state multiple times during the year in a report that was historically called the PEP report. The state has changed their reporting mechanism to EdLink now. We've referenced the PEP report for those who are familiar with it, or might want to find it on the department website and their data library. But moving forward, it'll have a new name and a new place to live. Yes, sir?
Dr. Okoski, would you prefer to finish your presentation, or do you want to take questions as we go along?
Your preference.
Okay. Ms. Dyson?
I can wait for that.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay. Thanks. And we're almost done here. Just to show you the metrics of the historical five-year trends in this one, we average around 90% of return rate, but we're rarely, we're really zeroing in on that 10%, so we can dig deeper to find out where those folks are going and the why there. Again, because retirees were pulled out. Notice in 2020, there was no evaluation data because of the abrupt end of the school year. But this is one that has pretty much resided around 90% over the last couple of years. So, tonight, we just wanted to spotlight the launch of the scorecard for you and one or two KPIs in each of the cornerstones. What are our next steps, and when can you expect to see the full scorecard? We have an interdepartmental team that has met as recently as yesterday afternoon. We're already mapping out the next round that will be released in November. You can expect three more under student achievement, one under family engagement, and at least one for employee development. So, we're looking to refine those metrics. Our staff is running those reports and working with Ms. Jones's team to get that data live in the next few weeks. We also, as we said, want to develop a data calendar so that folks can click on our website and use that as a reference sheet to see how often metrics will be repopulated and refreshed. And last but not least, we look forward to, by the end of the semester, sharing with you a school-level PDF printable scorecard for each of the schools. Three times a year, we'll populate a school-level scorecard. That is a PDF version that you can go to our website, select your favorite school, choose it, and print it so that you can see specific measures for that school. Some of them will be identical to these. Some of them will be additional ones added because they're contributing factors that help us reach the overarching district goals. So, that's our presentation for you tonight, and we thank you for inviting us back to share it, and we look forward to continued conversation with you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Dyson has a question or comment.
I just wanted to thank y'all. I am thrilled about this transparency that we're offering to the community, the parents, the teachers, the staff. I think it's so great that we're going to be able to be monitoring along the way. It's going to be easily accessible to anyone that wants to visit our website, and I hope it's front and center as much as possible. So, I very much appreciate this, and I know the public will as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dyson. Mr. Goddick?
Yes, I echo Ms. Dyson's remark. Thank you very much for giving us this data. I do have one question on the pre-K enrollment. And if you'd like to answer this later, that's fine, because I realize this is a presentation of the scorecard. But I know we've spent a lot of time and effort and money in increasing the pre-K enrollment. And then, I look and see the numbers for this year are actually lower than the numbers we had in 2018 and 2017. Can you give me some background of that or anything on that?
That's a great question, and I thank you for posing it, Mr. Goddick, because actually, we were in a meeting yesterday and today.
I was not a plant. I was not a plant.
We were in a meeting yesterday and today. We're talking about this, and I think that one of the, one of the benefits of this scorecard is it sparks the conversation. And so, I think superintendent is planning to have staff dig deeper into this KPI and in data statistics for you at an upcoming meeting. But to address your question, we patterned this KPI on official enrollment for the Louisiana Department of Education, which tags those student, those children ages three and four. As you know, you have the 0 to 3 in our entire network. And so, our network data is larger and speaks to a different number than the actual students who are tagged as 3 or 4 in the official pre-kindergarten class. For our purposes here, we followed the state report so that we could be consistent and set up our metrics that way. But we do understand that question, and so, for that reason, we're looking at ways that we can present that to the public in a different way. So, thank you, because you've just validated our conversations today. Appreciate that.
Good. Mr. Goddick? You done? Thank you. Mr. Goddick, Mr. Baloo?
Thank you. And my question's not as good as Mr. Goddick's. I just, I too want to compliment you on the, the site and the, your work on these KPIs. Just real quick, just curious why we have the trend lines on the graphs going right to left as opposed to left to right? Is there?
I believe that's how it was set up in the strategic plan, and that's how it copied the format in the strategic plan. But there's a feedback button, and we're going to take your feedback back to the team. But I'm glad you asked the question so that the public will hit that feedback button, because if folks, as they navigate this, we were open to suggestions. And so, we look forward to continuing to do this in a way that's more user-friendly and consumable by our community. So, thank you for that.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Baloo. Vice President Collins?
I just wanted to say, I appreciate us raising up and lifting up measurable go, you know, metrics so we can have something to refer to. And so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. Ms. Dyson?
I just wanted to second Mr. Baloo's comments, and you can record that as feedback from me as well. I thought it was quite difficult to, you know, I just think that it would be better if we could figure that, this out and do it the natural I.
No, and I think our programmer is listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dyson. Ms. Ware Jackson?
Thank you, President Tatman. Just wanted to kind of touch on a couple of comments that Mr., Mr. Goddick mentioned. Yeah, this man right here. Mikey, we were talking about pre-K and, you know, the enrollment or the numbers that we're looking at. I just want to stress that it's so important that we really emphasize high-quality pre-K when we're looking to draw from, from the district and from the parish. That's so important. It's good to have a number of seats, but if we, if we really are concentrating on, on the quality of the pre-K, I think we're going to do really, really well in, in raising those numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ware Jackson. Seeing no other questions or comments, Superintendent?
Finally, thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Sharon Williams, Chief of Schools, Dr. Michael Robinson, Chief Academic Officer, and Ms. Bianca Brumfield-Williams from our Human Resource Department to join us to share additional updates on the EBR Virtual Academy. As you know, we've, this was the first year that we've started this, this journey, and there's been a lot of adjustments that have been made, as we've been getting feedback from various board members, as well as community members, and we are working tirelessly to be able to continue to make this a better experience for our young people. Dr. Williams?
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Tatman, Vice President Collins, board members, and Dr. Narcisse. This is a quick update in response to just updating you on the EBR Virtual Academy, but also into, came up at our Committee of the Whole. You should have received a memorandum that outlined those questions and the answers to the best of our ability when the memorandum was written. So, just quickly, I'll fast forward to some questions about learning loss. And this graph shows where we've looked at each of the vacancies at, at the EBR Virtual Academy and the number of students that are impacted by those vacancies. The green lines represent previous vacancies that are now staffed, some point during the opening of the school to currently. The red is where we still have vacancies, and we were able to fill at least one vacancy today. So, that's an update. This is not quite up to date. Where there've been vacancies and the number of students related to those vacancies. And then, we had one resignation, and that's the yellow bar that represents a position that was staffed, and then, we had a resignation.
Dr. Williams, can you stay on that slide for just one second?
Absolutely.
On the presentation, it looks different than it does on the memo. On the presentation, that shows Math 6 green. I'm sorry. On the presentation, it shows it green. On the memo, it shows it red.
On Math 6.
It's the third one from the left.
113 students. You're absolutely correct. So, the vacancy.
Yeah, I just want to know which one it is.
The vacancy is in Math 6. Let me look at my notes. Yes, the vacancy is in Math 6, so it should be red.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, there was a specific question asked about the number of students who are impacted by these vacancies. Dr. LaSurt helped to cull the data to determine where the majority of students were being impacted, and that's in 6th grade. We have several vacancies in 6th grade. And then, also, our 10th grade scholars. We have an opening in ELA 2 in geometry, which are 10th grade courses, and thus, we have the greatest impact in those two grade levels. You can see those numbers there. The 109 students for 6th grade is, will be reduced based on the filling of a vacancy in the 6th grade. So, there was a question about how we're addressing learning loss, and one aspect of that is the grading of these students. So, each student will be looked at as the individual that they are, and based on the work performed, they will receive a grade. If there are deficiencies and assignments that could not be graded for whatever reason, some students are offered incomplete. And part of our process for remediating that learning loss is to look at each student individually, where they are, because it's very course-dependent, and give them individualized support through December. And the next slide will show you what that individualized support will look like. All the grades will be updated no later than December 15th for those students who have been impacted. So, there are three main pillars of addressing the learning loss, and these would be found in any school right now as we're looking at our beginning-of-the-year data. You just heard Ms. Okoski talk about our diagnostics and our scorecard. We're getting information updated daily. We have completed our ANET diagnostic exam, so each school has access to where each of their students are based on last year's standards. So, that diagnostic gives us a snapshot in time. The beginning of this year is a baseline. How do students finish up last year, and how are they performing on last year's standards? The ANET interim, which is happening right now, the window closes for most schools tomorrow, and we're up to about 61, 65% complete, will show us how students did in this first nine-week period. So, this is a snapshot of actual learning that's happening now. So, what we're going to do is use those two data points along- along with looking at the high-priority standards charts that our curriculum department, academics department, has put together for each course, each grade level, each subject, to determine where students need to be assisted. We're going to partner with Proximity and with folks at the EBR Virtual Academy to provide extended hour, extended help for students based on their individual needs and where they are now according to the ANET diagnostic and first interim exam. So, we wanted to show you again where our current enrollment stands for the EBR Virtual Academy. We have lost some students with the open enrollment period. As you can tell, we're at about 1,305 students right now. And that's a loss of about 112 or so students. Most of the students transferring out, transferred out within this open enrollment, not open enrollment, that's an insurance term, this period of drop and re-enrollment in their home school. So, you can see there were about 40 within this time period. Again, that is the drop window. That ends on October 22nd as we're going into the second nine-week period. I'll let my colleague, Ms. Williams, come up and talk about the current vacancies that we have in the EBR Virtual Academy. And then we also worked together on some overall data for vacancies in the school districts so that we could provide context for the EBR Virtual Academy.
Ms. Dyson has a question, so I'll go ahead and, you want to wait? Okay. Ms. Williams.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, we have some good news for you. The elementary side of the Virtual Academy is fully staffed.
Yeah.
So, there are no vacancies in the elementary side. But for the secondary, there are only six vacancies. So, that's good news from where we were at last board meeting. So, we're working, we're collaborating with the Office of Human Resources, Proximity, and the Virtual School to get those vacancies filled. We're actually working with our Math Four Professionals cohort that we have so that we can actually onboard those candidates so that we can actually get them in the Virtual Academy and the other traditional schools that we have that have vacancies. And with that being said, the vacancies that we have in the Virtual Academy, those students are still getting instruction, but it's just not with a teacher at this time. So, there, it's not like they're going and not having any instruction. Any questions?
Not yet.
(laughing).
I mean, we have some, but I think they're going to wait until you're finished.
Okay, thank you.
Until you all are finished.
So, with Ms. Brumfeld-Williams' help and the help of the HR staff, what I wanted to do, just for my own edification, was to look across the district and our schools to determine where vacancies are and how many. And this chart represents the total number of instructional vacancies that in schools across the district. And this includes our paraprofessionals as well. So, this is not just classroom teachers. What I also did is I looked, they were good enough to have this broken down by region. And what I did is looked at all the core classes that schools were missing and noticed that there are multiple schools with six or more vacancies. The school with the highest number of vacancies has seven vacancies currently. And those are in core and elective classes, so important classes, just as those are in the Virtual Academy. And again, those vacancies include all the instructional staff in the schools. So, finally, our immediate next actions and areas for improvement, again, finding teachers, qualified teachers to be in front of our students every day, and the individual student learning plan for those students who may have experienced extended periods of not having a qualified teacher in front of them. And then our family and student support sessions, and those have started. We're starting with just extending the hours for technical support for families, and then also going to add in the support of students after hours so that we can begin to close some of the gaps.
Thank you. Ms. Dyson.
So, on your last slide, right, well, first of all, thank you for this presentation. But on the last slide, was that going back to Virtual Academy steps that are going to be taken?
Yes.
Okay, so, thank you for that. I would like, though, to request the same type presentation for all of our schools so that we can see where we are other than the Virtual specifically. So, there were 15 middle school vacancies, and seven of them were at one middle school. Is that correct?
If you go back to that slide.
Or is that?
No, that's overall. Of all the schools, the school with the highest number of vacancies has seven vacancies right now. The EBR Virtual Academy has five or six.
Six.
Six, Ms. Brumfeld-Williams.
What was the 15?
That was the total number of instructional vacancies at the middle school. So, that could include teachers, paraprofessionals, ESS teachers, all of the instructional support category for that, for a school.
And that 15 includes the Virtual and Traditional and Magnet, Dedicated Magnet?
Mm-hmm. So, the way that the data is presented from HR is that they have columns for each of the types of teachers and the support professionals. So, that would include paraprofessionals.
So, you said five or six at the Virtual and seven at the highest middle school, the middle school that has the most?
If you'll go to that slide.
So, that would be 12 or 13 out of the 15?
So, but those numbers on that chart are totals across the school district. The asterisks at the bottom just describe that of all of the schools in the district, the school with the highest number of vacancies has seven vacancies currently.
And is that at the middle school?
It's actually at a high school.
Oh, it's at the high school?
It is at a high school.
A high school, okay.
Has the highest number of current vacancies right now.
Okay. If we can just get this same information done for our Traditional and Magnet schools, I would very much appreciate it so we can get a full picture of the entire district needs. I actually spoke at a meeting earlier this week and made a call-out to think about any recent college graduates who didn't graduate in education but are having a hard time right now due to so many factors of gaining employment. And really, I think we need to figure out how to get that marketed, that we're looking for. They can, they could even serve as subs through the privatization efforts that we're doing, but direct them there. We've got a lot of recent college grads without employment right now. And I just think that we just, this would be something that they have not considered. And they could start earning their alternative certification because they have a degree in history or science or, you know. And they may just have not thought about this. And even if it's just an interim situation, until they find a job in their field, we're in need right now. And so, the other thing that I just, I've mentioned is that with this learning loss that has taken place with COVID, with teacher shortage, all of that, across our system, I have liked, I hope we're having some discussions about the type stipends that we offer teachers to teach both virtually and in person, but also offer opportunities for stipends for Saturdays, for the upcoming holidays where we'll have a whole week for Thanksgiving. The students will be off. And the holiday, and winter holiday break, that is close to two and a half weeks and on a volunteer basis. I'd like to see, you know, need at schools and in areas and see if we would have any teachers that would like to help get these children back up so we can start the next semester, and they can start the next semester ready to be right in line with their peers. So, I just hope we're having those conversations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dyson. Vice President Collins.
This is the second time my colleague had asked for that information about across the district. And we had shared, we had mentioned during the previous meeting that we're getting them via email. I think perhaps the difficulty around some people accessing it is that it's a Google document. And sometimes if you click a link, and if you click, if you click a Google document, because I had to do it, and you're not doing it from a Google account, it'll say you have to request permission and yada, yada, yada. And unfortunately, sometimes you add too many steps between this is your information and somebody getting the information, it holds. So, we are getting the information weekly, but we didn't get it this last week due to staffing changes, but. Okay. I usually get a notification email, but I think because she's having such difficulty accessing the information, then maybe a PDF could be just generated and attached in the email.
So, it, when it came to me, it comes with a PDF, but you, when it becomes a PDF, you can't click the dropdowns that expands the information.
But you can't access the PDF in the first place until you go, I'm just, it just removes that barrier for her because she's getting the information, but she's not able, for whatever reason. Or maybe if somebody could show her and instead of.
May I interject here, please? I was asking a presentation so that the viewing public could see.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
All right. Well, I thought, didn't we, okay, no problem.
Thank you.
I was just trying to be helpful. Okay. All righty then. Well, so then, if we can get another presentation of the HR stuff for the whole district. And then I wanted to ask, I'm glad that, you know, students without teachers are receiving instruction. How are they receiving that instruction?
So, the, some students are receiving instruction through Edgenuity.
Okay.
And if a teacher, there's, there are substitutes for teachers where we have vacancies, just as we would in a regular brick-and-mortar school. If for some reason that substitute doesn't show up for that session, which happens in our brick-and-mortar schools as well, the Canvas course serves as their work for that day. So, they're working asynchronously during that time.
Okay. And then Edgenuity has what subjects? I'm familiar with Edgenuity as every subject. Okay, because when I first got exposed to Edgenuity, I'm just making sure I'm clear. From my own understanding, when I first got Edgenuity, when I first became acquainted with Edgenuity, it was for recovery work, not different, you know, everyday classes. So, all right, so Edgenuity plus Canvas plus the subs. And when did those students with the teacher shortage with Proximity start getting the subs? We supplying the subs for them, or did Proximity start supplying their own subs?
I'll have to let our HR partner answer that. I'm not sure about the Proximity substitutes. So, all of the vacancies?
Yes.
Okay. Any vacancies are covered by ESS.
Okay.
A third-party.
Third-party vendor for substitute teachers.
Okay. So, for clarity, and I just want to make sure that I'm, you know, I just want to make sure I understand. Those classrooms that Proximity are responsible for that do not have a teacher, ESS has been supplying substitute teachers?
Substitute teachers.
Yeah, so I mean, okay. And that's been from the first day?
I'll have to double-check that data. I won't say for certain, but anytime there's a teacher absence, we expect that a substitute teacher is called for.
Okay, I just, yeah, if you don't mind, just give me some clarity around that, especially with a virtual situation.
I'll work with our HR department partners to provide an answer to our superintendent.
Because I wonder if technology is, I'm sure that's difficult with technology being a barrier for some subs.
Yeah, it's different to substitute in a virtual environment than it is going to a school.
Okay. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. I pass. Mr. Goday.
Yes, I just want to thank you for bringing the number of staffing vacancies we have again to our attention. And, you know, I've said this several times, but for the HR report that we get, I would like the staffing vacancies to be a continual part of that report. It was on there for a while, and then in some kind of way, it's dropped off. But, you know, unfortunately, it took the issues we had with the virtual school to really bring this into the spotlight. But we have a lot of children out there who do not have a teacher, a permanent teacher in the classroom. I realize they're getting instruction, but they do not have a permanent teacher in the classroom. So, I'm glad you're bringing us this data, but it's the kind of data we need to see every month. And so, we can understand how deep the issue is and how far it goes. Because, you know, I look at data that we presented earlier on the KPIs where we had 30% of the kids had suspensions. We had 30% of the kids with 10 or more-plus days absent. We have all of these vacancies. And we can improve our scores a lot by just having kids in the classroom with teachers to teach them. And so, thank you for bringing this to us, but keep a focus on it. Keep us focused on it, because I think this is one of the most important issues that we have facing us today. We can do a lot of other things, but if we can help drive this to some kind of resolution, we do more good than just about anything else we can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goday. And just another comment, we're doing a lot of programming around the district about careers and trying to get people to work in different areas. It would seem that we would be focused on training educators, so they might come back and work in our schools. I don't know where that stands, but it would be a great pathway because clearly, we've got jobs available for people right now if they were qualified. So, it just might be something broadly we would want to look at. Won't solve our problem that we're pointing out today, but it could be a long-term solution for what we're trying to accomplish. Thank you very much, Dr. Williams. Appreciate your presentation. Superintendent?
President Tatman, that's my report.
Okay. All righty. Good report. We now move to item F2. It is a, it is a presentation on redistricting update and timeline. It is virtually, it is videotaped, it is approximately 30 minutes in length. So, go get your popcorn. I'm kidding. Do you want to kick it off, Mr. Shamlin, or?
Considering it's 30 minutes, I'll just take 10 seconds. Spoke with Mr. Garrett. He wanted to be here today. He had a previous obligation. I kind of impressed upon him the need to address some questions that the board had. I know that we sent an email to the board earlier, I believe yesterday, in pressing upon you that if you had questions, you could send them to us, and I would have him respond in a FAQ. And so, if you have those questions, please send them to him, and please CC me in the email. That'll help me to kind of help manage a response for the board. I won't say much more, other than he's attempted to address much of the questions, especially the issue of timelines and what they look like in his presentation. I'll let that play. And if I can answer questions afterward, I'm not the expert Mr. Garrett is, but I may be able to help. So, we'll let it play, and then we can talk afterwards.
Yep, thank you.
Good evening. This is Danny Garrett. I am, Dr. Blair and I are sorry we couldn't be there in person, but due to our schedules, we just weren't able to make it. But this is, we were asked to do a presentation, kind of going back over the general redistricting process and some timelines that y'all need to be aware of. Some of this might be rudimentary for some of you. For those of you who've never been through it, it doesn't hurt to hear this again, just to, so that you can ask, answer questions intelligently when your constituents ask you. So. All right, so the steps in the redistricting. First of all, we have to have the census 2020. Then we have to do something called malapportement. Then we get into drawing plans. We introduce the plans. We have publication in newspaper with something that's unique to y'all. with something that's unique to y'all, public inspection, adoption, delivery to the Secretary of State, and then election on the new districts in the fall of '22. So just as a recap on census 2020, the census is conducted, was conducted from late 2019 through mid-2020. Officially, Census Day is April 1, 2020. Now, we all know that people are born and die every day, so the number's not 100% accurate, but that's the date that we all use and it's just as inaccurate for everyone. Now, the census data then is presented to the president. Now, normally, this happens before end of the year in a census year, so it should have happened before end of year 2020. However, this year, the data was not presented to President Trump by the Census Bureau. They actually didn't report the census to the president until they reported it to President Biden in April of 2021. That kind of pushes the deadlines a little. Now, what they, the first thing they do with that census data is they apportion, they re-apportion Congress. And you may have seen that come out in August where they announced that Louisiana wasn't going to lose a congressman and that California was going to lose two and that Florida was going to get another one and that sort of thing, where they are apportioning, apportioning the seats in the House of Representatives based upon population. After they do that, they then submit that data to the states and, and it's submitted in very granular form electronically. Now, normally, if the census had been provided at the end of 2020, we would have expected that data in late February, early March of 2021. But it, the data was not actually presented to the states until September of 2021. So again, it kind of pushed us back a little bit. The first thing that we did for y'all and that any consultant would have done for you is we had to determine whether you were malapportioned. Malapportionment is whether or not you have any districts that are outside of the expect, the accepted population deviation. Again, for some of you, we've talked about this before, the purpose of redistricting is so that each single-member district has approximately the same population. The notion being that if you had districts A and B, and District A had 5,000 people in it and District B had 10,000 people in it, but there was just one member from District A and just one member from District B, essentially, the people in District A would have twice the voting power on the school board and that violates the constitutional principle of one person, one vote. So what we do is we take your existing districting plan. Now, it was a little easier for us because we, we did it last time. And we take those districts, we interpose the 2020 census data that was provided to us by the Census Bureau or released in September. We then calculate an ideal population. The ideal population is something, nothing more than taking the total population of the jurisdiction divided by the number of districts. Now, remember, the East Baton Rouge Parish school system is one of four in the parish. So the population of the East Baton Rouge Parish School District is not the same as the population for the entire parish. So we had to get the population just of the school district. And what you do is you come up with that ideal population. So that is total divided by number of districts, so that's the goal. Perfect would be if every district had that exact same population. In y'all's case, it's 43,019. Well, we looked at your plan, we discovered that in fact you had multiple districts that were out of, out of that plus or minus 5% off of that ideal, which is generally accepted to be in compliance with one person, one vote, as long as districts are not more than 5% off that number. Because it's really hard to get it exact, because you can only move population in certain ways. So we reported, EBR School Board back on September 24th received its malapportionment report showing that y'all in fact needed to draw new districts. So that then kicks us off with drawing the plans. The way we do it is we meet with the individual members and we, you know, everybody's got schedules and we're trying to accommodate everyone. We meet with you to review the malapportioned current plan and determine, look, districts have to be larger or smaller. And naturally, members are most concerned about how their district is going to be impacted, but their district has to fit into that overall puzzle. So they also have to be cognizant of when they move population. For example, in, in this year's, Mr. Gode's district had 23% more population in it than it was allowed off the ideal. So he had to reduce population. So we're going to ask him, where does he think that the, is the most reasonable way to remove that population? Other districts had very, very low population. Where do they think they're going to need to pick up population? So you go through those various guidelines. One, we're trying to get to a population within plus or minus of 5% of the ideal for all nine districts. You attempt, under Louisiana law, to use whole precincts to do that. Now, because y'all don't draw the precincts, those are drawn by the parish government, sometimes you just can't make it work. Because there are precincts in East Baton Rouge Parish that have 4,900 people in them. Well, 4,900, that's over 10% of your ideal population, so moving that much population from one district to another radically changes the, the population of those two districts. So if you need to, you can split precincts. And you have to split them along a visible census block boundary. There's nothing you have to remember, you can only split a precinct once and no district can have more than three split precincts in it. And this is the one, this is something you'll see as we're going through the mapping, is sometimes you're like, well, let's take that population and move it over here. That, that census block has 150 people in it, let's move it. Well, when you click on that census block, it may be much bigger than you think it is and it may actually extend far beyond what you think you're moving. Well, you can only move a whole census block. You cannot split that block. So sometimes it's difficult when you're trying to draw a straight line and you've got census blocks that are frankly crazy shaped. Another thing we try to do is we also try to keep communities of interest together, like neighborhoods. If it's possible to keep an entire neighborhood in one district, that makes sense. So that the people of that neighborhood, who are generally in the same part of the city, maybe generally have a lot of stuff in common, get a common representative on the school board. So you don't have, you try to avoid the situation where I'm on one side of the street, my neighbor's on the other side of the street, and we're in two different school board districts. Now, sometimes that is impossible to do because of the limitations. That street might be a block boundary, for example. In that block, it may be almost impossible to put those two blocks together, but you try the best you can. We also have to be cognizant of the Voting Rights Act. And that is, you have to maintain appropriate minority voting strength. You have to avoid what's called retroaggression. Retroaggression on the Voting Rights Act is when you make an election law change that impairs minority voting strength in the district. Now, unlike last cycle, or 10 years ago, there is no preclearance process in drawing plans now. Has to do with Shelby County versus Holder decision by the US Supreme Court, which essentially said that the list of states that had to have their election law changes precleared before they could take effect was arbitrary. And Congress had not actually given any thought to who should have been on the list, they just copied the list from 25 years previous. But that doesn't mean that the rest of the Voting Rights Act doesn't still apply. A lot of people thought the Voting Rights Act got repealed by, by the United States Supreme Court, that's simply wrong. And we will tell you if we think that a decision that you're making creates a Voting Rights Act issue. Now, that's ultimately a legal issue, it's ultimately something a judge would decide, but we can guide you in what you, what those, they're going to be looking at when you make your decisions. And we wouldn't be doing our job if we didn't advise you that you're making a decision that might not be a good, a good decision from that perspective. Also, when drawing plans, we work for you, but that doesn't stop you from reaching out to other members, to community leaders, to your own constituents and say, look, my district has to get smaller because we have too much population. Or my district has to get bigger because we don't have enough population. Where do you think we ought to make those changes? I know it's a very difficult thing, I've, I've worked for a lot of elected officials and I know it's a very difficult thing when you have to lose population and you have to communicate with someone who's a constituent and maybe a friend or maybe a relative and say, look, I'm going to have to take your precinct out of my district. You're not going to get to vote for me anymore. You're going to be in this other school board district. And sometimes they get aggravated, but sometimes it's not your fault. You, you, you just can't do anything else. You have to get the population in those things. So those are all of the things we look at when we're drawing the plan. And as a couple of you who've already met with have seen, we, we've got some pretty nifty little software that helps us do that. And sometimes you don't realize how hard it is to draw those lines until you see where those census blocks are or how those precincts are, are aligned. But that's that process and it, it takes as long as it takes. I've, I've had situations where I sat down with somebody for 45 minutes, I've had other times where I've sat down with someone for six and a half hours, I've had other times where I've met four, five, six times with the same person. That's up to you. I can meet with you individually, or Dr. Blair as well, or we can meet with you one or two at a time. Only thing we can't do is meet with a quorum of you, because I'd violate the open meetings law and I don't want you going there. So, once everybody sort of had the opportunity to draft their plans, you then introduce your plans. And this is something is somewhat unique from a school board perspective to the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board. Because there's a statute, Louisiana Vice Statute 17:58.2, and it dictates some specifics with regard to the adoption of plans that apply just to your school board. Normally, a school board, they decide internally what their process is and, and whether something has to be introduced and whether it has to lie over or whether it has to be introduced at one meeting and adopted at another. It's a little different than parish governments who do this by ordinance and a lot of the parish, particularly homehold charter governments have provisions in their charter that require ordinances lie over a certain amount of time. So each individual member who wants to introduce a plan, now again, you don't have to have nine plans. You could, you could have each member introduce a plan, you could have each member introduce two plans. Don't advise that. What you try to do is maybe coalesce to as few plans as possible, so you're just choosing between stuff that has consensus support. Now, each plan is going to be in the form, not only of a map, but it's also going to be in the form of a resolution describing each district by precinct and for those precincts that are split, identifying the visible boundaries, so that someone can look at that resolution and say, okay, District 1 has these whole precincts and then it has the northern half of, of the next precinct and the southern border being this road or this body of water. So that someone can read that and, and get a notion of where that would be on the map. The introduction of plans should take place at an open meeting, be it a regular meeting or a special meeting. And oftentimes, it's not really anything you vote on. You're not voting at that meeting, you're just introducing the plans. So oftentimes, you can call a meeting and just have all the plans introduced so everybody knows. Now, you should, at the same time, include the date that you're going to consider the adoption of the plans, including place. In other words, and this is, and this goes along with your special provisions in 1758.2. You need to, along with introducing the plans, along with making sure that those plans have maps and descriptions and resolutions, you also need to decide what day you're going to consider adoption of those plans. Part of 1758.2 requires that you publish your maps and the summaries of those plans in the paper. It's the advocate y'all chose in your official journal. And that has to happen at least 20 days before you can vote on the plans. So you have a built-in delay by state law. You're unique. You also have to, have to require that your plans be submitted for a period of public inspection. And in that publication, you're going to have to outline when that is. So that's the next thing, the publication in the paper. Again, it's required by Louisiana Vice Statute 1758.2 subsection C, it's only applicable to East Baton Rouge Parish School Board. Mandates that all plans be, to be considered must be published in the advocate, that, and that publication has to include public notice of the meeting at which the plans are to be considered for adoption, the general summary of the plan, and that'll be the population breakdown, that sort of thing, which again, that, our, our, our software generates those reports based upon the, the plan that's in front of us. A map of the plan, which we'll also generate, as well as the date, time and place where the public can inspect the plan. That all needs to be in that publication. Again, that publication has to take place at least 20 days before your, you can, you can adopt a plan. Now, public inspection. Again, the mandate for public inspection only applies to EBR School Board. I can tell you in most places, they do make the maps available so that the public does get an opportunity to review them before their elected school board members are asked to vote on them. But you all have to do it very formally. You have to identify a date, time and place in the publication. You can also, for example, put them on your website. The last time we did this, we used the Resource Center and we put the maps up there, I think it was a half a day on a Saturday, let members of the public come, look, see where their house is, ask questions. We're there to facilitate and we can answer questions and if they ask, well, well, why can't you draw the line at this lot? We can answer, well, that's because that's a block, that's not a block boundary. Or that, that district already has three split precincts and you can't split that, you can't split a fourth precinct. Or you can't split a precinct more than one time and that precinct's already been split, so you can't do it, you can't carve off another piece of it. We can help answer those questions. You can also, that, that also allows them to see what's been introduced and to see what their elected representatives are thinking about voting on. And then that gives them the opportunity then to communicate with you, their elected official, and say, this is the plan I think is better, this is the plan I think is better. So then we get to adoption. At that meeting, which again, was identified early on, it's conducted just like a, a regular meeting in an open meeting. Now, it can be a regular meeting, it could be a special meeting, you could make this part of one of your regular meetings, or you can have a special meeting where this is the only thing on the agenda. Same as with every other thing, it takes a majority vote to adopt one of the proposed plans. Now, because y'all have this provision that requires you have them, the proposed plans be offered for public inspection, I don't think you can wholesale change them. Like, you can't just draw a new plan. I do think you could make minor amendments, so long as it wasn't, it didn't fundamentally affect the plan. And the reason I bring that up is last cycle, we had a jurisdiction, wasn't a school board, it was a city, and while we were in their meeting, a member proposed a massive change to one of the ordinances that had been proposed and we literally had to recess the meeting, go in the back, make all these changes, generate new reports, generate new maps and bring it back out. Now, they didn't, they, that is not the plan they ended up adopting, but they were able, they were not limited by this piece. I think you're limited under state, under the state law provision that you have to have made public notice of plans you're going to consider, that really you can tweak them a little bit here and there, but I don't think you could make fundamental changes to the plans that are introduced. The, the board's going to be restricted to picking one of those plans. Now, if they pick none of those plans, they might just have to start over. Now, the next thing that's required by law is that the plan, and this is the only hard deadline in the law, the plan must be submitted to the Secretary of State by 4:30 PM and it's, the law actually says four weeks prior to the opening of qualifying for, for the election. Opening of qualifying, four weeks prior to the open qualifying for the Fall '22 elections is June 22. We all, it also says that if we have electronic files, we're supposed to find them to the Secretary of State. We routinely do, we did that last cycle, we will do that this cycle. We will supply those to the registrar voters and to the Secretary of State, so it's easy for them to figure out where people are registered and where elections should be held. Qualifying opens on July 20. The election is scheduled to be held on November 8 with the runoff, if necessary, on December 10. But that, that hard deadline is really the only hard deadline in the law. So we were also asked to look at, well, what's, what's the timeline that the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board can look at? Now, there was some discussion of, of a timeline to get this all done by the end of the year. First of all, the first timeline there, I, I'm going to go through it just because it's there, it's that one that says you have to have it done by June 22. Fact is, if y'all vote on June 21st, we would then have to be scrambling to make sure we got all of everything, all the data together to get it to the Secretary of State for 4:30 on June 22 of, of 2022. That is so highly not recommended, because all kinds of stuff can happen. And again, when you back that up, you still have that 20-day, so you would still have to have that 20-day period. Now, it would give you from October through May to tinker around with the plans, but I don't know that anybody really needs that law, that. And if you look to do that, understand, you'd be providing to the voters, they wouldn't find out till about a month before qualifying what district they lived in. And that's probably not the way to do it. Now, there, the other two, and I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to sort of see I can move myself around. All right, the other two are this. First of all, most of our school boards are looking at a, a general notion of trying to get their plans, we're recommending they get their plans done at least by the end of March. And if you do it by the end of March, that means you have from October to February to look at plans. It also means that, you know, if, if y'all were to choose that line, that we would hope that you would finish your plans with us by about February 17. That then gives us time to craft the resolutions, make sure they're written correctly and, and that the resolution aligns to what the plan shows. Then get those introduced at a meeting in late February, published in early March, because it takes a couple of days to get it to the, the ad- Because it takes a couple of days to get it to the Advocate, make sure they get it published. Go through your inspection period from when they were published. So your inspection period was sometime in that twenty-day period. And then get your plan adopted sometime in late March. That's one way to go. There's been some thought that y'all want to give the voters and potential candidates more, sooner information about what their district's going to look like. So there was a notion of, what if we tried to get it done by the end of the year? That's doable. It is. And we've got what we call an accelerated timeline. It is going to require kind of moving forward rather quickly. The notion being is that kind of start in the back, start at the end and work your way up. Plan on voting on the plans around the twenty-eighth of December. And then from there, back out to where, okay, we need at least twenty days from when they were published in a newspaper. So maybe make sure the publication took place on, say, December sixth. Then move up from there, maybe have adoption on December second. Give us a couple of days to get all the maps and everything to the Advocate. Because I know there are some deadlines the Advocate has for when they're published up. And then give us a little time before you're going to introduce them where you've locked in your plan and then give us time to prepare the resolutions. Now, there's about a week and a half between those two and this accelerated plan. The reason being is because after the twenty-third, we run into that Thanksgiving week. And I don't know that anybody wants to work on this during Thanksgiving. But, and that still gives us all of October and most of the month of November to do meetings and make sure every member has had the opportunity to craft the plan that they want. Also, if you're going to do either the March deadline or the December deadline, we do recommend that the board adopt a resolution establishing a timeline. Because that way, it tells the members, look, this is when you need to be finished working on your plan so that it can be introduced at this specific date so that we can then start this ball rolling. Because then, you could have a situation where members say, well, I want another week. Or I want another week, or I wasn't ready today. But if everybody has a deadline, then hopefully, everybody will then work towards meeting that deadline. So whichever of those timelines you choose, we would suggest that you set some deadlines. Also, one of the things we've talked about is during that twenty-day period or during the period between when plans are to be finalized and introduced, you can do some additional public outreach. Maybe a town hall meeting where we essentially explain the redistricting criterion to people. Because, look, the ordinary citizen, they don't know why you can't draw a line at a certain spot. They may not realize that you have to have population being approximately equal. One of the common misconceptions is, well, there's a bayou there, you can't cross water. Well, you can, but you have to stay within those census blocks. And they don't oftentimes realize, we don't draw those, those are imposed upon us. So, the last thing we're going to touch on is additional public input. To provide more public input, the school board may want us to hold these town hall-style meetings to help inform the public of the criterion. Maybe have one prior to the deadline to introduce so that when they're having conversations with their school board member, they know what to ask for and what's not possible. Then, after they're introduced, maybe hold a second one. Maybe have that maybe in conjunction, kind of with the public inspection period that we had. Have a day where we set them up, come in, make a little presentation, kind of explain to the people who choose to show up what they're looking at. And that way, it informs them and helps make frankly, more informed questions. Because they can say, okay, so are you saying, okay, now I get, you split this precinct here, so that means you couldn't split it over here as well? Because they will have been informed of that information. And they'll get to see it. And they'll get to look at, you know, let me find my street. Last time, we did it with paper. I think this time, because of technology advances, we may be able to make it much more digital, much more interactive. And we can see about that. Like you said, the members I've already worked with thus far, we've had the opportunity to plug the laptop into a big screen TV. And it does make it a whole lot easier than trying to lean over my shoulder or Dr. Blair's shoulder while we're doing stuff and look on a TV. I mean, nowadays, we have TVs that are fifty, sixty, seventy-inch TVs. In prior years, maybe we had to use a projector, it just wasn't clear. But you can see what I see. And that way, it makes it a whole lot easier to help make decisions and see what can happen and what can't happen. Ultimately, this process is something, it's, I'm not going to say it's painful, but it is difficult. Because in all the elected officials I've worked with, very rarely does an elected official want to discard constituents. They don't want to keep people out. I had a police juror tell me ten years ago, that's okay, Mr. Garrett, I'll just keep that thousand extra people because I don't mind working hard. But you can't do it. Also, when you start looking at those particular situations of blocks, I have, when you see some of these odd blocks and you click on it, you go, well, wait a minute. You mean, I can't just move those twelve people? No, because when you click that, it moves a large swath of geography that now cuts a district in half. And that's one thing, districts have to be contiguous. EBR has a bit of an interesting issue up with the Northeast. But normally, everybody else, you've got to make sure that puzzle fits together and fits together tightly while meeting all those other criteria. And, look, people say, I've had members look and look on the map where it says there's zero people. And they're like, I know that there are people living there. What that tells me is that if there are people living there, there are people who didn't fill out the census. And so we can't use them. It'll be, then it becomes a policy decision as to whether a particular district is drawn at the ideal, a little bit below or a little bit above. But again, you are constrained by the plus or minus five. And because otherwise, that really exposes you to a one-man-one-vote claim. And also, you have to look and make sure that you're not impairing minority voting strength as you go through this. My experience is that the members understand that. And sometimes, they understand there's stuff that they want that just doesn't work mathematically. And, you know, they move on from there. And, you know, the hope would be, you come up with a plan that all nine members agree to. At the end of the day, it takes five of nine. But you really hope that you can have a plan that has consensus approval. And I think that's what most of us try to look for. So what we tell people, the numbers are what the numbers are. We can show you, we can show the members every option. And sometimes, you have to see it, you have to see it on the map. But that's how we're looking to move forward. We've already started having meetings. We've had meetings lasting as little as an hour and a half. We've had a meeting last as much as six and a half hours. And you know what? We're going to keep meeting until we get it right. And we're going to use whichever timeline that you, the EBR School Board, choose to use. So, again, sorry I couldn't be there in person. All the members, you can always reach out to me. You have my contact information. And we're going to continue to set up meetings with the members we haven't met with yet. And we're going to answer as many questions as we can. And if we don't know the answer, we'll try to find the answer. So, thank y'all very much. And I guess Dana, I will turn it back over to you.
Yeah. Let me just go ahead and kind of cover a couple of things. Madam Vice President and I met with Danny and staff this morning to sort of discuss some of these things relative specifically to timeline. And what we're working right now to do is to have a special meeting where we would actually discuss the timeline and as a board, vote on it. The two timelines that were presented by him were really frames of reference. They're not in stone. They were just, there are, some of us on the board believe that we should try to be deliberate and try to have our districts as early as possible so that the public knows what districts they would be running in. Others would like to take more time, dig a little deeper, and that's fair. And so, what we're going to, what we're working on right now, and I think some of you have maybe seen some polling from Ms. Armand, to try to get dates where we can all be at a meeting to discuss that timeline. I'm good, really, either way. I tend to lean toward wanting the public to know what districts they would run in. I also, just on a personal note, met with the demographer today. And I don't know why he said, I was only about forty minutes. So I don't know where the hour and a half thing came. But I can only go so many places, you know? Like, it's challenging because I can't, you know, go grab a precinct. They have to be contiguous. And there were even a lot of things in that process that I remembered that I had forgotten from the last process. So we all need to be updated. As a part of the conversation that Ms. Collins and I, Vice President Collins and I had, we are both very interested in adding a lot more public information to this process. And so, in the past, we did the deployment of the maps, the display of the maps at the IRC. Danny was there and people could come in and look at them and ask questions. We're actually thinking of something, kind of talked about, something a little more meaty where maybe it would be a workshop. Maybe after, the maps would be displayed and maybe, we got to, I think our demographer's cool with this, but really, some hands-on. So if Dr. Finney wanted to say, what would happen if you moved this precinct over there and so on and so forth, you could kind of see how the software works and that sort of thing. Got to get Danny to agree to that, but he seemed in concept, yeah, ready, willing, and able to do that. We'd actually like to do it maybe, and this is all, we can all decide this, but we'd like to do it maybe in two ways. Last time, we kind of showed the maps we were going to consider presenting. This time, we actually thought maybe at the beginning, we'd show the maps the way they currently are and have an understanding of the process and so on. And then, from there, you know, move through the process, whatever that calendar looks like. And then, when we get to the point where we're approaching where we have to sort of put forward our plans, our individual map configurations and precinct configurations, we would have another similar one, but it would be on the new data and the new ideas about what those districts might look like. And the demographer seemed pretty interested in that. In addition to that, I think there might be ways we could work with like the libraries to get our maps over there, put them on our website, see if we could get partner organizations to put that information up. So, we'll have that meeting where we decide what the calendar is moving forward, whatever that is. Again, the two that you looked at were really just frameworks that Danny put together in a PowerPoint presentation. And then, you know, it might be all the way on one end, all the way on the other end, or right down the middle. I want to tell you that I remain committed to trying to get a plan that every board member can support and feel good about. And I think we can get there. Looking at my district and the people I touch, which are just a couple in my districts, I think, you know, let's say this, I'm never going to put a plan together that changes any one of my sitting members' districts without talking to them about it. And I just think we can get something together. So, I'm actually kind of excited about the process because it's interesting how population shifts have happened. But, and I don't want to speak for you, Dawn, but I know that as leadership, we're committed to making sure that this is as transparent a process as possible. And we want to make sure that every board member and really, the entire community has as much input as they're going to have. So, anyway, I just wanted to make those comments and extended a thirty-minute presentation to forty minutes. But, so, anyway. Okay. We move on now to item G one, Board Appointees to Community or Agencies. Ms. Ware Jackson?
Sorry, Mr. Chapman, that was for the previous item.
Okay, sure.
I know we were instructed to send questions or whatever we had any concern about to Dr. Blair and Mr. Garrett in an email. And I've done that already. September thirtieth, I sent an email asking for specific information, not just for myself, but for the entire board. Because I really believe that, especially based on previous board meetings, there were so many questions. And board members were not really aware of the process and exactly what we were doing. And there was a lot of, just not enough information. And we can't just depend on us board members who have done this before. So I think it's really important that we all understand exactly what we're doing and where we're going with this. And I believe in order to do that, we need to understand where we've come from. So I asked for previous maps and previous statistics. We did get some of those and I shared those with the board. But specifically, at the end of September, I asked for particular information. And I'll just look at the reports I asked for were of malapportionment benchmark, population and voting age, population by race with percentage, and voter registration by race with percentages showing each precinct and each district. And at the bottom of each report should be the grand totals with percentages. I sent an example of what I was looking for based on what the 2020 state rep districts received. And I think it's important that we see all of that information. And I was just having difficulty getting this information. I requested this presentation today because I know we're going into these individual meetings. And without board members having all of the information and knowing where we came from, it's a little difficult to make those decisions. I mean, we can, I mean, look, Mr. Gode and I share a territory. And we kind of figured out where we need to go to increase the population in my district and to decrease in his district. It's, you know, it's pretty obvious where those areas are. But there's a lot of information that I think that we need to have historically to know where we're going. And because many of us can only run one more time. And these seats are not ours forever. We have to get this ready, this is going to be for ten years ahead. And we're doing this not just for ourselves, but for future board members and future leaders in this district. So, and besides, the public has a lot of questions as well, you know? So I believe in the spirit of transparency and in the best interest of the entire district, we really should have as much information as possible and make sure that we're doing this carefully and everybody having enough knowledge to feel comfortable about where we're going with this. So, I requested this presentation and I requested information by email already and have received a little bit of it, a little bit trinkled in about my district. But in my email that I sent, I specifically said that every board member needed to see all of the information. And that just has not happened and not even in this report. So, you know, I'm still requesting that information. And I'm still requesting that the public be allowed to see that as well so that when we go into these meetings, we have the public trust and we can move forward in a much more desirable way. So again, I'm asking for that information. I've asked for it in the email, so I'm asking for it again now. And looking forward to seeing this and making sure that everybody has that same information. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ware Jackson. You've been kind of bird-dogging things for me. Can you, did you take, you have all those notes of what she's missing about what Ms. Ware Jackson's missing?
Well, I was actually going to ask Ms. Ware Jackson to forward her request to me. I don't know if I was included. I checked my email, didn't see the September thirtieth, but I'd be glad to follow up.
Please.
To be sure she gets what she needs. So just forward that to me when you have an opportunity. And I may.
I think I sent all of that to the entire board.
Okay. I'll get with you.
But in case, I'll check and make sure that you're copied on.
I have also been working through Mr. Shamblin on it. So, you know, just he can help bird-dog that. He's helped me with some of my requests as well. Thank you, Ms. Ware Jackson. Vice President Collins?
Yeah, I was intending on being short and sweet and just, you know, saying that I do hear my colleague, you know, as part of board leadership. that I do hear my colleague, you know, as board, as part of board leadership, I do hear, respect, and agree with the sentiment that my colleague, board member Ware Jackson, expressed. This is, some members have been through redistricting before, but during my tenure, this, this will be my most, I consider this the most important vote I've taken to date, that I'll be taking to date. There's no other vote a body like ours can make that's more important than to set the direction of itself. And that's quite literally what redistricting does. And so I just want to let my colleague know publicly that I, I hear her sentiment and I'm in agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. Any other comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, we go to item G1, Board Appointees of Community Agencies and Committees. Anybody have a report? Mr. Gode? No.
The Dancing, you know, for the VIPS has been rescheduled. It was postponed because of COVID, COVID restrictions. The Dancing Through the Decades.
Wait, excuse us.
Sorry, I haven't. The Dancing Through the Decades for volunteers in public schools has been rescheduled for Sunday, October 24th, and that's at the Terrace of the River Center Library. Tickets are online. You can click and register on the VIPS website and others areas to be able to get that. So I encourage everyone to try to attend. There will be, you will be able to feel the fire from Disco Inferno. And the band Essential Groove will be there too. So please come out and there will also be a solid, silent auction. So encourage everyone to try to attend, October 24th, that is this Sunday, from 4:00 to 6:00.
Are you dancing, Mr. Gode?
No, I will actually be doing trunk or treat at my church.
Okay, alright. That might have been a draw if you were dancing, so I was just going to say.
I doubt it, seriously.
Thank you, Mr. Gode. Vice President Collins?
Board President, if you will, it's not, that item is actually a moment of privilege.
Yep.
Okay. So I just wanted to do a little shout out to the mighty, mighty Bengals of Bel Air Creative Arts and Sciences Magnet High School. I saw on Instagram and reshared that on today. Congratulations are in order for the Bel Air Bengals Robotics Team. They competed in their first competition of the season at Liberty High and walked away with the first place trophy. So go Bengals, go. Thank you.
Alright. Thank you, Vice President Collins. Any other reports from Board Appointees? Seeing none, we move now to unfinished business. Consideration of a request for the approval of the following school board policy revisions and related matters. J B C E, Public School Choice. Do I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Bernard and seconded by Mr. Baloo. Got the Bs going over there. Okay. Do you want to just touch on it, if you don't mind, counsel?
Yes, sir. Policy J B C E is a public school choice policy. It was a part of a number of additional policies submitted to the Board for approval at the Cow. We actually pulled it for an amendment. In brief, the, the requirement from the law is that school systems address capacity, the definition for capacity when it comes to school choice and transfers. The request was that we also include the definition for functional capacity for special programs, magnets and gifters, which I've done. And so that's been included in the language. The other changes are, the other amendments are the same amendments proposed to the Board at the Cow, and we submit them to you for approval.
Okay. I see no questions or comments from the board. We go to the audience on H1. Any comments from the audience on H1?
Good evening. I'm James Finney. I read the revisions, and I think it gives principals too much power to define their functional capacity in a way that prevents them from accepting students from allegedly failing schools from taking advantage of this program. So even if you do go ahead and adopt it, the issue of what mystery percentage gets applied to a school just because they have a mystery program or a magnet program, and those, those are suspiciously round percentage figures that I saw in the presentation at one of the facility meetings. So I think more, much more work is needed to avoid giving principals too much power to keep other children away from their award-winning schools. So just a caution. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Finney. Any other comments from the audience?
Greetings. I, I've actually taken out the time to read it. And one of the things that I noticed is that it's not actually in line with federal law. Part of it states that, that we would actually have the parents choose to go from the, the school that is failing and go to another school, and that the parent would be responsible for the transportation, not the school system. That's a violation of IDEA as it relates to children with disabilities. If it's still within the school system, as we do know, a lot of our children with disabilities are placed at schools that are not their neighborhood schools. And it is because ESS does not offer programming at every school for children, particularly those dealing with their, their specific disability. I'm going to use mine, for example. Children with autism, they can only go to certain schools. Right now, the way it's spelled out in our school system, children with disabilities that have an IEP when it comes to middle school, if they live on the northern side of the parish, they can only go to the schools Park Forest Middle and Northeast Elementary and Northeast High. That's not fair to those children, and it's not fair to the schools and the parents. When we talk about choice, that means that the parent has the right to choose. So if I want Corinth to go to Woodlawn, that's supposed to be my choice. But when we disseminate information about our schools that are failing to the parents, it don't give them a choice. It tells them that your school is failing, and it doesn't necessarily let them know that, hey, we are allocating funding towards the school that is underperforming so that they could actually get to a better grade or get to a better standard, and you have that option to stay. Let's do better about making sure that that information is disseminated out, but make sure that parents have a real, true choice. Because right now, children with disabilities don't have a choice. I can go on to name schools like Braumore Elementary. That does not allow children with disabilities to be able to go there. Instead, they are bused to Jefferson Terrace. That's a problem. And that's not parent choice and school choice. That's called force. It is not our option to send our children across town. It is also not our option to want to make them be stagnant. We want each and every child to be educated, but we want them to be educated at a great, at a great expense of the state. We want them to be able to be like you. And so what we do, we give them the right to be able to choose their neighborhood school, but their neighborhood school actually have the right and the choice to be able to perform adequately. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Corley. Any other questions from the audience? Comments, I'm sorry, from the audience? Seeing none, we come back to the board. Seeing no comments or questions from the board. Madam Secretary, will you please conduct the vote? Oops, I'm sorry. I didn't see you up there.
I, I hit the correct, I was, I was slow on the draw. I apologize.
Sorry.
Okay, quick question. So we initially were changing this policy to be compliant with the law change. Did that law change require us to add a definition of functional capacity?
The legal, the legal change required us to address the definition of capacity. The request to address functional capacity came from a board member at the Cow. I want to stress that we currently, and I don't want to speak too much for staff, but, but currently, staff in practice does this anyway when it comes to magnets, gifters, or any special programs. ESS, they determine the number of seats in a class based on the needs of the program, the characteristics of the program, the needs of students, et cetera. So what this does is it codifies what the, what the staff is currently doing. It just puts it into policy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. Seeing no other questions or comments from the board, Madam Secretary, please conduct the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
The motion is, the item is approved. We now move to the consent agenda. Mr. Gode?
Yes, the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of items unless the board members so request, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as an item on the regular agenda for a separate vote preceding the last item on the regular agenda. Professional Services Contract. Consideration of a request for the approval of a professional services contract between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and Experience Management Institute in the amount of $88,948 to provide for compensation and classification study. The strategic alignment is employee, is employee development. The funding source is S R 3, Action 2. Consideration of a request for the approval of the professional service contract between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and the following. A, the Arts Council of Greater Baton Rouge Incorporated in the amount of $89,500 for the support of the fine arts. The strategic alignment is student achievement. The funding source is S R 3, Action 2. B, Kids Orchestra in the amount of $45,000 to provide after-school orchestral instruction program. The, the strategic alignment is student achievement. The funding source is general fund. Consideration of a request for the approval of Sedgwick Claims Management Services Incorporated as a third-party claims administrator for the East Baton Rouge Parish school system and to authorize the general council and the superintendent to negotiate and execute a contract. The strategic alignment is operational excellence, and the funding source is workers' compensation slash risk management. Consideration of a request for the approval of the following school board policy and policy revisions and related matters. B E, School Board Ethics. I D, Curriculum. I D C C, Kindergarten. I D D F, Education of Students with Exceptionalities. J B A, Compulsory School Attendance Ages. J B C, School Admission. J R, Student Privacy and Education Records. G B C A, Protection of Criminal Background Check Information. G B C, Recruitment. J D, Student Welfare. Last, consideration of a request for the approval of the recommendation from Gwen Shamlin, General Counsel, East Baton Rouge Parish School Board in the matter of the Arbery Young versus Ruth Banks, East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and the Hartford Accident Indemnity Company, number 669691, Section 26 of the 19th Judicial District Court, Parish of East Baton Rouge, State of Louisiana, and to provide for related matters. That is the end of the consent agenda, and I so move.
We have a second on the, seconded by Ms. Bernard. Does anyone wish to pull an item from the consent agenda? Which one? Two and three? Anyone else wish to pull an item from the consent agenda? Seeing no other items to be pulled, we are seeing no questions or comments from the board. Are there any comments from the audience on items four, five, and six on the consent agenda?
My apologies. I had to make sure that number five was the one that I needed y'all to pull. I would greatly appreciate if someone can pull the one dealing with policy and policy revisions. Due to the policies that we have as it relates to children with disabilities, those are not in line with federal law. And if we actually pass these policies as they are written right now, we will end up facing a class action lawsuit as it relates to all our children with exceptionalities. So I really strongly encourage everyone to please pull that one. Number six, the litigation. I really want y'all to pull that one just so I could talk about litigation, because our school system continues to get sued. And if we, and, and I'm telling y'all about the possibility of a lawsuit if we don't pull number five. So I just really hope that we would look at that one, look at those two, and pull them, and actually just allow the opportunity for us to come up and actually have free, free, nice, and sweet dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corley. Any other comments on four, five, and six on the consent agenda from the public? Seeing none, we are back to the board. Seeing no questions or comments from the board. Madam Secretary, please conduct the vote.
Please vote.
Do we need to call roll? Do we need to do a roll call vote?
Got it. The motion carries.
Okay. We now go back to item number two. Consideration of a request for the approval of the professional services contract between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and Experience Management Institute in the amount of $88,948 to provide for a compensation and classification study strategic alignment, employee development, funding source, S R 3, Action 2. Do I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Baloo, seconded by Mr. Gode. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we go to the audience on item two in the consent agenda.
Thank you. I'll repeat what I said two weeks ago, which is that you're paying some administrators an awful lot of money to have the HR house in order. And I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done before this is a wise use of money. But the main reason I'm standing up here now is to thank whoever pulled items two and three and to suggest that a substitute motion be made deferring these until the next committee of the whole, because even though Mr. Howard and perhaps other members of the board, but for sure, he made a very specific, explicit, clear, and I would hope understandable to everybody in the room, request that the impact on the S R budget be attached as background, and I don't see any additional background information. And so I think it's completely inappropriate for you to approve two or three in the absence of that additional information. Because if it's come to your emails, but it's not in the backup, it's like it didn't happen. So there's, you're going to spend this money, and you'll probably approve it tonight, but you shouldn't, because eventually, all this money will be spent, and you will have nothing to show for it. So at the very least, demand that your superintendent, every time he wants to tweak the budget or get your approval to spend some budget, give you even a single or get your approval to spend some budget, give you even a single page on how that, that new expenditure will modify or fit within what you've already approved as that funds budget. It's not an unreasonable request. What is unreasonable is you keep asking administration after administration to provide information, they keep blowing you off and you keep accepting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Finney. Any other comments from the audience?
How you doing, everyone? Um, my name is Shakita Tatum Brown and I'm a parent, um, with students in EBR Parish. I would like to thank the board and Dr. Narcisse on the great job on the scorecard. Um, I would say that the, the analysis with the report will be a tool that would give, give us great help, um, with EBR to be competitive and attracting and retaining top talent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Any other comments on agenda item number two? I two.
Good afternoon. My name is Jayla Cage. I'm a 10th grade student at Estoma High School, and I'm here to talk about how teachers, I feel like teachers need to be paid more because they are very hardworking, and especially in the times now, I feel like we should continue to support them. And also, I'd like to give a thanks to Dr. Narcisse and his colleagues for the changes they're trying to make in our East Baton Rouge school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cage. Any other comments from the audience on item two?
Okay, with number two, Mr. Howard stated at the committee of the whole meeting that he would like an actual itemized detailed expenditure report that showed what all, uh, S R funding we had used and how much we had left. I definitely agree with that, and I am so sorry that he's not here tonight, but I definitely wanted to echo, um, echo his sentiments. Um, like Dr. Finney stated, there are many different things that we can use S R funding for, one of them being cameras in the classroom. Um, if you, if you wait and send this to the committee at a whole meeting for next month, by that time, the U.S. Department of, uh, Office of Special Education would have the opportunity to disseminate that information out. They're currently in the works of doing that. Secondly, I've asked our facilities manager, Ms. Monique Spalding, in regards to using S R funding to actually create a sensory room, um, here in, in the building when we have school board meetings and committee of the whole meetings. I know I bring my child to every single meeting, and my child makes a lot of noise, but these meetings are about children, children, and we never have space that is child-friendly at our board meetings. So I thought that using S R funding would be something great that we can do instead of doing what we're about to do. So if we could just hold this item until we get that expenditure report as Ms., as Board Member Howard requested, and wait until the committee of the whole meeting for next month, then that we may be able to see that we can actually use the S R money for some things that really and truly benefit the children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corley. Any other comments from the audience on item two? Seeing none, we come back to the board. Seeing no comments or questions from the board, Madam Secretary, please conduct the vote.
Please vote. The motion carries.
The item is approved. We move now to I three, consideration of a request for the approval of a professional services contract between the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board and the following, A, the Arts Council of Greater Baton Rouge, Inc., in the amount of eighty-nine thousand five hundred dollars for support in fine arts, strategic alignment, student achievement, funding source, S R three, action two, and B, kids orchestra in the amount of forty-five thousand to provide, forty-five thousand dollars to provide after-school orchestral instruction program, strategic alignment, student achievement, funding source, general fund. Do I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Ware Jackson, seconded by Mr. Goday. Seeing no comments or questions from the board, we go to the audience. Any comments from the audience on item three?
I'll just reference my earlier comments with respect to spending S R money without any clue as to the budgetary impact, and if this is a recurring event, it should be paid with general fund money anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Finney. Any other comments on item three?
Okay, so with number three, I noticed that the fun, that the money would only be used for two schools. I would love for my child to actually be able to have access to the symphony because he loves classical music. Many of you don't even know, I play the piano and I've won many trophies from doing that over the years. I started my child off as a baby listening to Little Einstein, which is a cartoon that plays classical music, and I, I have taught him many different genres, but specifically classical with Bach and Mozart. I would love for this program to be not just at two schools, but at all the schools, so that all our children can have access to it. As we know, studies show that children that listen to classical music while they're being educated, they actually retain that information at a much higher rate. So if we can have access to that at every school, that would be great, but in the past, we've always taken it from general funds, and now we're going to split it and only use general funds for half of it and S R for the other. I strongly encourage that we look at using the general funds for it all if we're going to limit it to two schools, and that we strongly consider finding a really good way to make sure that every child throughout our school system have that access. I also know that the Alex Haley dancers, they used to come, as well as the Baton Rouge, uh, the Baton Rouge Ballet, they're doing the Nutcracker. Can we please have programming like that at every school to allow our children an access to see those things in live and living color? This is not for one school, two school, for all eighty-three schools. And so I just strongly encourage y'all to please, please take the money out the general fund, but allow access for all, especially my little boy, because we would really, he really loves classical music, although he's playing Sesame Street right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corley. Any other comments from the audience? Seeing none, back to the board. Seeing no comments or questions from the board, Madam Secretary, please conduct the vote.
The motion carries.
The item is approved. We move now to, uh, new business, item J one, industrial tax exemption program application, International Mezzo Technologies, discussion, consideration of an application from International Mezzo Technologies, uh, 2020, 2021, for industrial tax exemption and related matters. I think, do we have someone here to make a presentation on that? Someone from, um, someone from Mezzo and relate, yes, come on up. And you can just however you would like to present it, uh, it's fine.
Thank you. Good evening, Russell Richardson with the Baton Rouge Area Chamber, also Mark Turner with, uh, Mezzo is here. Um, we, we've got a couple of, uh, I T E P approvals here from the, um, the industrial tax exemption program, which, uh, made it through the state commerce and board, um, September twenty-four, so they're moving through that local approval process. Uh, the first tonight is the International Mezzo Technologies. This is an investment to, uh, of the manufacturing equipment and technology, software to improve in, uh, the capacity of their operations. This will be a three-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand-dollar investment. Uh, it will add two new jobs, a hundred thousand dollars in new payroll, uh, to the existing payroll, three-point-three million, for a total payroll, three-point-four million. Uh, the ten-year projections, ten-year local tax revenues of seventy-seven thousand seven-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars, twenty-year, uh, local tax revenue of two-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-dollar, eight-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars, and the total abatement, uh, of that twenty-year pe, uh, period will equate to forty-six, just over forty-six thousand dollars.
I failed to get a motion. May we have a motion for this? Moved by Mr. Goday, um, seconded by Ms. Bernard, I'm sorry, my error. Uh, Ms. Collins, I'm Vice President Collins.
Uh, there was some mention of some kind of, uh, previous I T E P concerns that Mezzo had, separate from this one. Can I get some more information about that?
Yes, that'll be part of a non-compliance letter as part of when they made changes in 2015 to the program, uh, the, the job requirements that come along with I T E P contracts now, um, track whether those jobs meet those requirements that are put in those contracts. So, uh, what we'll see at next week's Commerce and Industry Board at the state, they're going to come out to present those non-compliance letters to the board. We'll find more out at the state level, and I think we'll have a chance to come back here and address that, uh, at the next school board meeting in November. Uh, so I, I would look at that as a separate item. Uh, the application for you tonight is for 2021 and beyond. Uh, that item that will come up for the non-compliance will be at 2019, uh, the year 2019, uh, where they fell out, but has since told us that, uh, they, they've regained that status, but we, we can address that, I, I think, after that comes up to the state board, uh, similar to how the, the approval process has come through.
What's the, um, board council, what's the deadline for us to get this done for this new item?
We are required to place an item on the agenda thirty days from my receipt, uh, from the higher authorities, um, and I'm going to, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe we have sixty days to approve. I'm not sure about that, I don't want to say it for sure, but I would recommend we address this tonight and not delay it till next month, if that's the, uh, consideration. I would recommend considering it tonight and being through with it. Um, and I will go on, since the issue came up, Board President Tapman and I spoke and met with a number of authorities, uh, uh, and other local entities considering I T E P to think about how to address the issue of non-compliance. Um, and we're going to bring some options to the board, um, hopefully in November to consider, um, and we'll talk with, in more detail about that later. I don't want to share too much because we're still in the process of formulating that.
Okay, I thought I was able to find a date, but go ahead, uh, that's fine.
Yeah, just, um, to Mr. Shamblin's point, um, this is new territory on the non-compliance, right?
Correct, yes.
So I, I have a question, I know it's not the agenda item, but just a little bit, um, does the, so when the non-compliance letters are sent out, and they, they're sent out at the seat, at the Commerce, uh, Board, um, Board of Commerce and Industry meeting, is, is, is the Commerce Board going to make recommendations to us relative to what that remediation might be, what, what our options are, or is that something that we will straight up decide ourselves?
At, at this point, they have not given us any recommendations for locals to, to make. Uh, what I have seen is they've put the agenda out for the October twenty-seventh meeting, and in that agenda, they have recommendations to come back from the locals, uh, whether it's a partial, complete for that year. Now, each year, that if a company is not compliant, you will have the opportunity to address that year. So for instance, if a company's only a couple of months underneath their job requirement, they make those hires and then they're back, back in, uh, compliance.
Right, okay, so it's just new territory, that's the, we don't know exactly what that's going to look like yet.
Yeah, this, this is, since they made the changes in 2015 and put the job requirements, this is the first, uh, non-compliance letters, uh, that have been distributed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Richardson. Ms. Bernard?
Thank you, Mr. Tapman. What was the length of time that they were non-compliant?
Uh, I understand from the company about two months, maybe three months.
Two months, okay, and did it have anything to do with COVID?
Uh, could have, possible.
Is someone from Mezzo here, can they answer that?
Yes.
But I, I do, I do want to say also that I agree that we should take this item separately and wait to see what the Board of Commerce and Industry says, but I think that people here would, would maybe benefit from hearing if it did have anything to do with COVID. And the fact that it was only two months, um, is good, so.
Mr. Turner's here, would you like to address it?
Yeah, great, thank you.
Identify yourself if you don't mind.
My name is Mark Turner, I'm the Director of Finance for International Mezzo, and actually, we were out of compliance for six days.
Six days?
Six days.
Wow.
That's it.
So maybe there's a way to prorate for the year or something? I don't know, I wonder what the Board of Com, I'm interested to see.
Well, that, I, I just wanted to make it clear that it wasn't two months, it was six days, actually.
Okay, well, thank you, that, that's.
I just think it's an important point.
I, I appreciate the information, I'm glad I asked those questions, but I, I still do want to wait and see what Board of Commerce and Industry does. Um, I feel certain that they will take them on a case-by-case basis, and I, I really appreciate your answer to my questions, thanks for the information.
Thank you, Ms. Bernard. Vice President Collins?
So what, um, what triggers the actual letter going out? Is it like, and, and I'm just kind of playing around here conceptually, so if, at, at one point, and I don't know what the rules are now, I think they changed, but mandatory car insurance, people would have ten days grace or something before something was flagged with the, what, what triggers, in this case, a actual non-compliance letter going out?
If they, if they go below what they put in the contract, um, I don't know the period of how long, but if they do go below, uh, at some point, that will trigger it. Usually on, on these programs, they'll, they'll turn in their compliance work at the end of the year, uh, I don't know if that's the case with I T E P, um, and then they go from there to understand whether they made compliance or not.
And this is for the 2019 fiscal or calendar year?
Yes.
And when did they receive the notice?
The notice went out October first.
Of this year?
Yes. Yeah, my note says October first was the, the letter was sent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. Counsel, Mr. Shamblin.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, respond to Ms. Collins' question, I like to be as accurate as possible. It's thirty days to place an item on the agenda for consideration and additional thirty days to actually vote upon it, so it's sixty days from notice. I wanted to make sure I responded correctly to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shamblin. Uh, Mr. Blue?
Thank you, just real quick, uh, and this relates to the, the questions about non-compliance. I know it's not on this, this application, but, um, the non-compliance has to do with the number of, of new jobs that were, um, offered, but that's separate from the property tax, um, for the parish, is, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
So, so that previous project increased the tax base for the parish, East Baton Rouge Parish?
Yes.
And this project will also increase the tax base?
Correct.
For East Baton Rouge Parish, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blue. Ms. Ware Jackson?
A quick, quick question, um, with the timeline of when we get the With the timeline of when we get the notice, is there a particular reason that this doesn't come before Committee of the Whole?
I can answer that, we've never done that. We've always gone to the, we've always gone to the full board meeting, but, but if you have an issue with that, you can add an agenda item to the next month's Committee of the Whole and make that a policy. It was the way Mr. Goday handled it and the way I've handled it, we, because it comes from Commerce and Board, it comes, I always say that wrong. It comes from On High, I like what whoever said. Board of Commerce and Industry, I know it, but I can't say it. And so everybody's aware of it, I mean, anybody who's following that's aware of it, and so, but if you all would like to set a policy to say it goes through the Committee of the Whole, I don't know that it's ever going to be on the consent agenda. So I mean, that's your issue, I mean, you're going to run it.
I just wondered, because, you know, I know we always, we always ask for things to come before the Committee of the Whole, I just wanted to know if there was a particular reason we did it a little different.
I'll admit, I don't watch the, that board as much as I used to, you know, in terms of, but I used to pay a lot more attention to it in terms of all of the applications that were coming through. I just, I don't look at it as much, so I don't see the data really until we get it. But we usually, in the past, there's been requests for special meetings upon receiving it because of other timelines. I have personally, as president, resisted that. I've always wanted there to be a timeframe between when we receive that application and when we hear it. And so, for example, if we would have received that application, say, this week, it wouldn't be on this agenda, it would be on the next agenda.
No farther out.
And we've done that before, in fact, one time that happened to us, and we actually had to kind of put out an early agenda so that we could meet our 30-day requirement, but yet, because we want to make sure that the public does have time to see it and look at it.
Yeah, it gets a little tricky in there.
But I'm, I'm cool with, you know, if we want to, I'm, you know, I think if we want to set up a policy on that, that's fine.
Okay, just curious, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ware Jackson. Any other questions or comments from the board before we go to the audience? Seeing none, we go to the audience. Any comments on item J1 from the audience?
First, I appreciate the concerns raised with this not going before the Committee of the Whole, because the letter from the, from On High was dated September 28th. I can't imagine it didn't arrive in time to put on the October Committee of the Whole, but since that didn't happen, it seems, in light of Mr. Shamblin's comments, we tracked the information I got from that letter and from a follow-up letter I got from the Department of Economic Development, or whatever the name of that agency is, it would be perfectly within your, in your authority to defer it for consideration at the November Committee of the Whole, with the assumption that you will all be satisfied and vote for it either on the consent agenda or separately at the full board meeting in November, still well within the 60 days required by the program rules. And I will save most of my comments for the Chamber of Commerce wanting to control education, but try to pay for it as little as possible for the next one. So let me talk about Mezzo International. I appreciate the mention that they were not in compliance. With respect to Vice President Collins' analogy, though, if you're without liability insurance for a couple hours, you do get fined by the state, they just don't tell you about it until six months later. And then the only way to get out of a fine is if you turn in your license plates within 10 days of the day they say they mailed the notice. So the company knew what the rules were when they asked to join the game. If they're out of compliance, they should take consequences. But there was a statement about how they increased the tax base, so it's worth your noting that looking at taxpayer, I, I'm sorry, parcel ID 30827049, I am on the assessor's website, International Mezzo at 10246 Mammoth, has a total market valuation attached to the real estate, which is separate from personal property, of $2,315,734. Their prospective 2021 tax bill is $1,042.44, because exemptions, presumably the ITEP exemption, frees them of $40,252.76. Granted, some of that is for fire protection that's not being funded, some of it's for schools that aren't being funded, some of it's for the assessor's office that's not being funded, you get the idea.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Finney.
Thanks for your time.
Appreciate it. Any other comments from the audience on J1?
I'm against all ITEP exemptions, so let me list the reasons. IDEA is not fully funded by our school system, so by IDEA not being fully funded, that means many children with disabilities like my child does not get the resources in their classroom to receive a free, appropriate public education as required by law. That's a problem. Our school system has many, many deficiencies. I can speak about the playground right now at Corinth School, Northeast Elementary, that requires, that has them playing, and it's not in American Disabilities Act compliance. It hasn't been for years. I can speak about the building, our central office building, and how I had to help many individuals that are disabled by holding the door so that they can come in and out, because we never had an ADA coordinator before now. By us giving ITEP exemptions, that is taking real money away from the classroom and away from our system that we can use to get into compliance. In addition, we face many litigations that cost money. Every single time we have to pay an outside attorney, it costs us. These ITEP exemptions can give us that funding so that we can actually utilize it in a proper manner. Last but definitely not least, we keep having a teacher shortage, and that's primarily because we're not paying our teachers and staff what they're worth. If we did not give an ITEP exemption, then we could actually give our staff a raise as well as bonuses like Livingston Parish did. I'm just giving many examples of what we can use ITEP exemption money for, but when we keep giving the exemption, we have nothing, nothing to help our kids. So each and every child costs each and every dollar, and we need each and every dollar from each exemption. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gorley. Any other comments from the audience on J1? Seeing none, we come back to the board. Mr. Shamblin.
Yes, I just wanted to address the motion made, I know Mr. Goday was making the motion, probably to style the motion as a motion to approve or deny.
Motion to approve.
And that would be an amendment, a friendly amendment to what's on the table, so we would need to make sure that the second agrees to that.
Just that it's clear that it's a motion to approve.
Yes, yeah, yes, okay.
So that friendly amendment is adopted, and we have no other questions or comments from the board. Madam Secretary, please conduct the vote.
The motion carries.
We move to item J2, Discussion, Consideration of an Application from Coca-Cola Bottling Company United Gulf Coast LLC for industrial tax exemption and related matters. I need a motion.
Move favorable.
Moved by, moved, motion to approve by Ms. Bernard, and seconded by Mr. Baloo. Any comments from the board, any comments or questions? Seeing none, we go to the audience. Oh, I'm sorry, I really, I'm sorry, it's getting late. Would you like to, I need you to speak to it, if you don't mind, just.
Sure. Yeah, I'll just describe it in general here. So this is a $42 million investment to expand their facilities by 120,000 square feet. They'll invest in the facility itself, as also, as the, the equipment to make the facility more efficient and get more product to the area there. 10-year revenues, 2.9 million, 20-year revenues, 7.7 million, and the total exemption of that 20-year period, 5.2 million.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Yes, sir.
Seeing no questions from the board, we go to the audience on J2.
$5 million is a lot of money. Mr. Tapman, was that an intentional product placement, or was that incidental?
I tried to turn it where the calories are so that it would reflect my physique.
Gotcha. So it's interesting that items that may benefit students or teachers must come through the Committee of the Whole and be carefully vetted over a two-week period, whereas corporate welfare can just slide on the agenda with 48 hours' notice and get unanimously approved. So I would again encourage any of you to propose that this be tabled for consideration in the regular process in November. But fundamentally, this is not proper fiscal management. If people want to be part of this community, they need to be willing to fund education. They should not be coming to the largest school district in the state asking, hey, is it okay if we don't pay our bills? That's what they're doing. The Chamber of Commerce would like to control things, they would like to fund campaigns to fund the new board members, they may be even influencing things behind the scenes, but God forbid you actually expect their members to pay their full share of property tax. If I built my own $2 million McMansion after I win the lottery, which I guess requires buying a ticket, so might not happen, I would be expected to pay property tax on the full improvement, no matter how many jobs I created in its construction, or how much I was adding to the eventual tax base 10 years down the road. There are 50 states in the United States of America, 49 of them do not subject their school systems to this kind of corporate welfare. It would be nice if this board would take a stand for something good, not for the welfare and benefit of the business community. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Finney. Any other comments from the audience on item J2?
There's a lot of things that I can think of that we can use this money for, and giving Coca-Cola an exemption is not one of them. I've had the pleasure to pass the Coca-Cola plant that's on Plank Road often, but what does Coca-Cola do for our school system and for our city? They make plenty of money, especially when we need water, like during hurricane season. DeSantis makes lots and lots of money. That's a Coca-Cola product. Why can't this money come back to our school system and we help our kids? I actually consulted with a company and found out to bring our playground at Northeast Elementary into ADA compliance would cost about $10,000. That's nothing compared to the amount of money we're going to give Coca-Cola if we approve that exemption. That means we can bring every single playground into compliance. What about the children like mine that are runners? I walk up here and I hold his hand tightly, because if I give him the opportunity, he would run through this board meeting, and it would not be good for us, because then I'd have to run behind him. But this is a problem also for the staff at the school, which means that it requires fences. Those fences cost money. Right now, we may have a surplus, but we know that our cabinet has about 10 chiefs, and each one have a salary of $130,000. Will we be able to feasibly pay them next year? This ITEP money would allow us to keep great and wonderful people like our chief of staff and our chief academic officer here. We need them to be here to deal with academics. We need our chief of staff to deal with, to deal with our staffing. Let's not let them go because we don't have the money by giving an exemption. Let's keep the money. Tell Coca-Cola, not this time, but maybe next year. But this year, we need that money. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gorley. Any other comments from the audience? Seeing none, we come back to the board. Seeing no comments or questions from the board, Madam Secretary, please conduct the vote.
The motion carries.
The item is approved. We move now to item K, Organizational Items, Announcement of Meetings. Ms. Bernard.
Announcement of Meetings. Facility Plan Community Meeting to be held October 27th, 2021, 6:00 p.m., Bel Air High. Some or all board members may attend. Miami-Dade County School Visits to be held October 31st through November 3rd, 2021. Some or all school board members may attend. Facility Plan Community Meeting to be held October 3rd, 2021, 6:00 p.m., Scottlinville High. Some or all board members may attend. Committee of the Whole to be held November 4th, 2021, at 5:00 p.m. at the Professional Development Center. Facility Plan Community Meetings to be held on November 10th, 2021, 6:00 p.m., Terra High School. Some or all board members may attend. Facility Plan Community Meeting to be held on November 16th, 2021, 6:00 p.m., Woodlawn High. Some or all board members may attend. Regular board meeting to be held November 18th, 2021, at 5:00 p.m. at the Professional Development Center. And I move adjournment.
Ms. Bernard has moved that we adjourned. Adjourned, meeting adjourned.